Good evening, I'd like to call the General Committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interest of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Amen. Mr. Warner, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Fotch.
Ms. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman and Mr. Long are not with us. Ms. Lemoine?
Here.
Ms. Geisart?
Here.
Ms. Rodney?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Fotch. Before we go into the first item of the agenda, at this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence. Mr. Shawn Warner's mother, Ms. Mary Warner, passed away, and I'd like to take a moment of silence for Ms. Mary and the entire Warner family, please.
Thank you, and Shawn, our deepest condolences go out to you and your entire family and Doc Warner.
Thank you very much. The prayer and the welcome.
They're there in abundance, believe me.
Absolutely, and will continue. Okay. First item on the agenda is the Lower St. Bernard Transportation Network feasibility study. And tonight with us, we have from the Regional Planning Commission two members. If you would, please come up and introduce yourself to the board members, and thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you for inviting us tonight. I'm Karen Parsons. I'm Principal Planner at the Regional Planning Commission. I'm a transportation planner. And with me is Jacob Losky. He is the manager, our consultant manager, for this project. And I am the RPC staff manager for this feasibility study.
Okay, we'll go on to the study. If you would, please give us the presentation.
I'm just gonna give a quick intro. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the Regional Planning Commission. Our commission basically sets transportation policy for an eight parish area. And we are the Metropolitan Planning Organization, so our major task is the federal funds that come, that are allocated to our region for transportation. Our Transportation Policy Committee determines how those are distributed. There are St. Bernard Board members on our commission. And so, one of the studies that we are undertaking right now is this roadway network and resilience study for Lower St. Bernard. And essentially, it is, it's not connected with the port's actual, has anything to do with permitting in the port. It is to evaluate the traffic, both road and rail traffic, that might be engendered from that particular project. So, yeah, got it. So, just real quick, the study includes, it's looking at the future for St. Bernard, and we're working in coordination with the Port of New Orleans, who put up the match for the study, and St. Bernard Parish, to do, essentially, looking at the feasibility of and identifying the future needed transportation network improvements if this port were to come to St. Bernard. We investigate all the impacts, the alternative transportation solutions to manage traffic, accompanying the proposed port for the Louisiana International Terminal. And also looking at any associated land use development that might come with that. So, we're kind of taking in all the changes that would happen over the next till 2050, and then understanding what that will do to the existing roadways, to the existing rail network, and ways that we might mitigate that. And so, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jacob, who is, again, the project manager for GIS engineering. He is the, they are the prime for a consultant team that the Regional Planning Commission selected to do the evaluation.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you all, board, for having us. I'll lead it from here. So, question is, what is this study for? What are we doing? And so, in the planning phase, you look at a preliminary purpose and a preliminary need. So, that preliminary purpose is a short-term and long-term improvement, as Karen noted, for the network in St. Bernard, focusing on the Judge Perez, St. Bernard Highway and Parish Road networks, and leading that traffic up to I-10 and I-510. How can we get that traffic to the major artery in the interstate system? So, it's to provide efficient access and egress to accommodate land use changes, as she noted, and with the terminal, intermodal facility, and associated traffic. Preliminary need, so this preliminary need is the value of feasibility of the short-term and long-term improvements. And again, the preliminary need, there you go. And so, you're looking at these five different needs. When it comes to evaluating the network, we're looking at the system linkage. How is your local roadway network gonna get to the I-10, I-510 corridor? Looking at intermodal relationships, which is rail, it could be pedestrian. It also is looking at rail, pedestrian, and traffic vehicular. So, then economic development that comes along with any proposed roadways that are not here, and also that are improved locally. Looking at the capacity improvements, the growth and the projected future volumes. What does that look like in congestion? And then hurricane evacuation, even though we do have contraflow in lower areas of Louisiana, not just St. Bernard, we are timed to get out. So, what does that look like for a Lower St. Bernard coming through this area to get up to Parish? So, that's also a preliminary need. Moving on to the study area, so the shaded area is the major focus, being those corridors. However, the black and white lines, as you see, is the rail system. And the star reflects the location in Violet of the International Terminal. So, this area is the main focus on the network improvements. However, we did have to go outside of these boundaries to take traffic counts to see what it looks like at I-510. What does it look like in Araby? What does it look like throughout the Parish? And I'll get to that in a minute. So, what is the outcome of this study? What are we doing this for? What is it gonna provide to the public? What is it gonna provide to DOTD? So, this is the stage zero portion of it. It goes to stage six, also show this later on. But ultimately, we're gonna come up with proposed build alternatives based on traffic counts, based on science, based on public comment, put that together, and package it into a report format that covers environmental, traffic, what the roadway future looks like as far as the layout, how many lanes, what are some turn lanes possibly, what are some near-term improvements, sidewalks additions? So, looking at all pedestrian, like I said, pedestrian, railroad crossings, the queues that are driven from the delays of waiting there while the rail passes. So, that's the summary of this. And then upon completion of the stage zero, it goes into what is called Stage One, the environmental phase. It's an environmental study that DOTD will be conducting. So, our study from the MPO, from Regional Planning Commission, goes to DOTD, and they'll take the environmental, Stage One, and move it forward. And what that does is screen down any alternatives to a preferred, which is one. And so, that's in the future. That still has to come. And I mentioned preliminary need and preliminary purpose. That preliminary purpose and need can be shifted and changed based on outcomes throughout the next phases. And then, once funding is secured, that's when it goes into full design, and then followed by construction. So, this is what I just mentioned, the DOTD project delivery process. We are very early in the process. We are here, stage zero. It's roughly a one-year duration. We are approaching month eight of 12 currently. And from here, it goes to Stage One, which I just mentioned, that planning environmental. And then, Stage Two is actually the funding, where the state and other resources come together and look for matches, federal dollars, local dollars, and whatnot. And then, it goes into Stage Three, which is your design. Four is construction, letting, which is the contracting part of it, and then construction. And then, operation is obviously when we use that roadway. How is this study related to the port project, right? That's what everybody's tying in, you know? What's going on with this? So, the port of NOLA analyzed, the port traffic analysis limited to specific inside their facility operations and construction, whereas we are evaluating the entire Parish, along with that coming in, as if we had a crystal ball. The Regional Planning Commission study is more comprehensive, as noted, and looking at the roadway network throughout the lower region of St. Bernard, and focuses on short and long-range planning efforts. Both share data, so some of the efforts are not duplicated. But ours went in and did a lot more, as you'll note, I'll see, show you in a little minute. The RPC study will result in project alternatives that aim at improving traffic congestion, pedestrian facilities, and rail operations. Who does this study involve? So, it's obviously St. Bernard residents, the local businesses, local government, and subdivisions of local government, being here at the school board. Community groups, economic development organizations, stakeholders in the transportation industry, being truckers and rail and whatnot, and then tribes with ancestral interests. Traffic count, so this is what I was referring to as far as the shaded area, and where do we go outside of that shaded area to collect data? So, those red dots on the screen is the volume counts. Those are seven days, 24 hours. And they go back and analyze those for movements, and what traffic is coming through, the number, the volume. The yellow one, yellow dots are the speed radar locations. Not as many, but what it does is allow us to develop the traffic flow. How fast are these vehicles traveling, or if they are traveling, are they stopping traffic? And then, the light blue is the turning movement counts, which is 24 hours at an intersection. So, to the right, you see there's five speed radar, 17 turning movements, and 36 different locations where we took volume for traffic counts. So, that's a full week, 24 hours, and it can't happen during school. It has to be the normal, it can't be summertime. It has to be a normal pattern where school's in session throughout the Parish. And it's defined, it's defined in a manual through DOTD. So, everything we've done has to be protocol to DOTD. The railroad data, so these three locations were, or six locations. So, the East Judge Perez, East St. Bernard, through Araby, and then that's Norfolk Southern's, blue and green, and then down by the ferry terminal, just to get an idea. And what are we looking at? We're looking at the train timing, the vehicle delay time, and the vehicle queue. So, that's how many cars stack up trying to cross over the rail. So, we have that information. That gets, all gets put into a model. And then, that model is a comprehensive model from RPC. They have the whole eight parish network, so we do have information throughout the area that goes in with it. So, this was a, you know, how can we get involved? How can you get involved? We really want to know and help understand the needs of the Parish, the transportation needs and challenges, what's working, what's not, what improvements would aid in the mobility. So, that's, again, it's not just vehicles. It's pedestrian and multimodal throughout St. Bernard. And obviously, those icons shape your community, informed decision-making, which helps us to make sure we getting it right. And then, enhance quality of life ultimately, is the idea. To date, we have survey responses from our website and through our public outreach and engagement. Through the survey, we had 274 responses on the community survey. Forty-three on what we had was Mark the Map, where you can go in and identify locations here, X, Y, Z, and give us a little note to say, this is a problematic area, and this is why. And then, 27 mailing, mail-ins. And all of this will be in a form in the appendix of our report. What are we hearing so far? So, this is on the concerns of the surveys that were taken. Now, this doesn't, obviously, you see the percentages, doesn't add up to 100. Each person filling out a survey was able to choose multiple concerns, checkboxes. What they see is the biggest issues. So, out of all the different checkboxes of seven, eight different items, these were the top three. And it's pretty overwhelming that increased traffic congestion is a big concern. The traffic safety is secondary, and emergency vehicle access is third. Excuse me. And then, how will we utilize this feedback? And as noted, we'll continuously review feedback and ideas from the surveys. We'll focus on what matters, where your input is gonna be part of this study that's gonna be weighed in through these alternatives, which are gonna be six different alternatives. And then, that's gonna go and hand it off to the environmental, where they're gonna do some more public outreach and have a formal public hearing. And it's gonna be a continuous effort on the next phase also of community outreach. And then, all feedback will be considered and incorporated into the final report, as I mentioned. Study timeline, so we got underway in November of '23, and we're trying to beat the one-year mark and get it done in 10 months. Right now, all the green that you see have been, has been completed or underway. And then, the red is still what we're working towards. So, I'll hit a few of them. So, we had to kick off, we had the traffic counts and data collection. We formulated a website, and a website launch started survey and comment period was January through April. The initial findings and stakeholder meetings were prepped. The traffic analysis is still underway. P E L process, that's an environmental linkage. And what that does is hopefully expedites the planning effort and the environmental Stage One, where they can utilize all the documentation that we've done and roll that over so they don't have to repeat some of the efforts. And what it is, it's done by FHWA. So, the Federal Highway Department is, who's came up with the P E L process. So, we're acclimating that into this study to try to help facilitate the environmental piece as well. Stakeholder meetings and interviews, community event outreach. We have attended some CAC meetings with the port. Community meeting number one was held at Mission Church up the road in Violet. That was in April. And then, we went to the community outreach with the Tomato Festival. We had a booth there, tried to get flyers out. And so, we're still taking the survey. Survey closed in May, so we went further than April. Survey closed in May. We're currently taking all those 274 comments plus, and gearing it towards overlaying with the science behind accounts, traffic data counts, what the model spits out. Like, this is a location, it's a hotspot. Well, let's see what comments tie into that. So, kind of overlaying and seeing, and it helps us truth what the model's saying. And then, so we still have, that's the June portion of the analysis of the outreach. Developing the long-range roadway network, and then travel demand model is the crystal ball. So, those are where it determines what the traffic's gonna look like in 2030 and 2050 to understand what the roadway network's needs are gonna be. And then, moving forward, we're gonna have a community meeting, number two, either end of July or early August. We targeted the end of July at this time. It may go into early August, depending on review processes between our traffic models and DOT. And then, and from those, once the model's approved or accepted, that's when the near-term or short-term improvements can be looked at on the existing issues. So, pedestrian, it could be any type of capacity improvements, being turn lanes here, just looking at the flows. And then, draft this report and submit it, and then get comments, and then turn around and submit a final. So, that's the process that we still have to go through. It'll be enduring the next two, two months, three months, to get all this put together. And we'll be back out here. So, that, I think, ties into the last slide here, staying informed and getting involved. I do have this for the school board, this PowerPoint, or this presentation. That icon, obviously, or QR code still does work. That is active and live website. And then, please go to it, stay informed. You can read about the progress, and that's gonna be updated every two weeks or so, just putting new stuff on as we get, especially throughout this next couple of months. And my contacts up there, if anybody has questions, and Ms. Karen Parsons as well. Thank you all for having me, and I guess.
Thank you very much. Okay, questions? Anyone? Ms. Harris?
So, I have two questions. One's probably easy and one's sensitive. So, I'll go with the easy one first. Recently, the legislature approved $230 million for the port for infrastructure. Does that come into play with you all? Is that funding for you all, or is that different and not part of this process?
That's different and not part of our process. So, the alternatives that would be developed will also have a conceptual cost estimate associated with each development, with each alternative. And so, that part just goes forward. And those are numbers. It is what it is. And I think from this study, as it goes through the environmental, it gets a little bit tighter, and pencil gets sharpened as you get through the environmental to see what a more accurate cost. So, it's still conceptual. So, that funding is not related in this study.
So, then, the more sensitive question, especially with us, right? So, we have a school that is smack dab in the middle of the projected port facility. And we have to make a determination at some point of what we're going to do with that school. How does our timeline for making that decision come into the impacts of your study? Do you all need to know sooner than later if we're gonna have a school there? Or do you go forward thinking, yes, the school is there, and this is what we recommend? Do you come up with two scenarios of if a school remains there? How does that impact? How does our process impact you?
So, from a school location standpoint, it is gonna likely be the same amount of vehicles coming and going. It would be good to know the location of it due to the influx of that point source onto whatever roadway network that is. But ideally, the number of traffic and vehicles in and out of the school is what's gonna ultimately determine what the roadway alternative looks like. So, that was a long answer to say that the school's there today, and the vehicle's there today. So, I would imagine unless the school grows double the size, or that's something that we should know. If today you have 150 folks, and you're gonna have 700, that would be additional traffic on the roadway, and that's when this comes in.
But, so you're gonna present a plan that shows maybe additional turning lanes or medians to protect our students at the current location versus if we move the school, that would then change potentially what alternatives you would recommend?
Pedestrian folk, yes. Yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Jacob, for being here.
Ms. Karen, thank you for being here. So, we don't have any preliminary information on the St. Bernard industrial corridor? Do we know of any work, anybody doing anything on that project? Not this time. Do we have any information on any of that?
Are you talking about below St. Bernard, the port, the proposed port location?
No, there's something called the St. Bernard Lit Industrial Corridor. Seen advertisements on it in publications, and the Port of New Orleans is supposedly pushing that to bring a road in from Parish Road, an elevated roadway.
So, I mean, we're aware that that is one of the ideas that's out there, and it could likely be one of the alternatives that come, you know, is considered in the feasibility study. So, yes, I mean, we're aware that this elevated expressway is, you know, a desire of a lot of St. Bernard residents, and we're looking at it. We're looking at it as part of the alternative package.
And, you know, that would really be helpful, and it would allow us as a board to be able to make an informed decision on where the best location to put the school would be. And, you know, right now, I don't know about the rest of the board, but I feel like I have a gun to my head. Yeah, I have to move the school, or the Port of New Orleans is going to put a container terminal around an elementary school.
Right.
With four, five, six, seven, eight-year-olds. I mean, they're telling us, move the school, or we're gonna build a container terminal around the school. And we're just trying to be able to make an informed decision on where the best place to put the school would be. And I just, you know, I can't imagine that, you know, I know you, Jacob, you're doing a traffic study, and that this terminal, the size of it, and you know how many trucks this thing's gonna put on the street, would actually work with the current infrastructure that we have. I mean, we have to have another roadway that could feed into this and to feed the traffic out.
So, and that's where public comments can influence the alternatives that come out of our feasibility study. So, I mean, we've heard from others that this is a desire of, I don't know if it's a desire of all residents, but it is something that we, we understand is desirable to get the traffic off of LA-39 or LA-46. And so, it's one of the things that we are looking at in, as part of our alternatives analysis.
Do we know of any funding sources for that, for that road? Has any been, anything been appropriated from the state or from the federal government to?
Not yet, not yet.
So, we have any money for that?
Well, I think, you know, once there's an estimated cost, an estimated cost associated with this, I mean, it'll get refined over time as, as more engineering's done. These typically projects, you come up, at the end of a feasibility study, there is sort of a ballpark amount based on the information that you've gathered so far. But as it goes into engineering and design, it gets more and more and more refined. And so, you really, in terms of raising those funds, it's helpful to kind of have that number and to know what the magnitude of cost is before you're making requests for federal discretionary funds or looking, the states looking at its state transportation plan and saying, is this a priority? And how much money could we apply to this? So, it's funding, unfortunately, is a, I guess it's a conversation. And as you saw in the multi-step, those circles, you know, on the stage zero to.
Stage one, stage two is the funding.
Yes.
So, from this, they take it, and they say, okay, this magnitude, 350 million, 500 million, you know? This is a priority. And then, that's conversations that are held amongst congressional delegation, local government, and so forth, state.
Yeah, and these major projects, and this would be a major project, you know?
This is John Bell Edwards' signature economic development project for his eight-year term. This is his project. Any idea what it might cost to put an elevated roadway from Parish Road to the east side, the east side, the east side of the Violet Canal?
I don't know. I think that's a, they're gonna be working on that.
Right. We don't have that answer.
Those numbers.
We don't have a number to spit out right now. There are comparable projects in the elevated roadway, LA-1, down to Grand Isle. That's a comparable project, if you ever been down to Grand Isle. So, that's elevated highway that leaves a four-lane, and it's a direct shot over the marsh. So, that number would be somewhat, I guess, competitive or comparable. But other than that, I really don't have any other project, or we don't know the span length, we don't know, we don't get into that. Right. So, this is a conceptual alignment and a footprint of a 200-foot corridor wide that we're trying to preserve so we can fit multimodal. that we're trying to preserve so we can fit, uh, multimodal and roadway, uh, inside of that same corridor.
It would be helpful for us to be able to get some of that information so we can make that decision. And, um, you know, I, I feel like the Port of New Orleans, they just want us out the way. But we only have one chance to get this right as a board, at the school board, to put this in the right location. And we're just trying to get some information on where that might be. Uh, I'm for one, I don't want to have any of our students going to, to a, a school in the middle of a container terminal. Can't, can't, I can't agree with that.
Yeah.
But you would think, you know, the Port of New Orleans would, you know, use some of its leverage in the legislature to try to get some of these answers and get some of these questions answered for us if they want to be our corporate neighbor. This is our newest corporate neighbor. I don't think they paid any taxes down here, anybody yet, not that I know of. And they're, move the school or we will build a container terminal around it. Does everybody feel the arrogance? I mean, you should feel the arrogance of that statement in this room. I mean, that's pretty arrogant for somebody who's been here, what, how long have they owned the property? Two years, three years? But, um, in any event, uh, I would appreciate this information. I appreciate you guys coming here today and, and presenting this to us and keeping us in the loop when we have any further information on where, where, uh, that the traffic study is going to be and what are the movements of this traffic, traffic study? And if we can get any, any more information on the St. Bernard LIT industrial corridor. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I had Ms. Roddy next.
All right. Um, either Ms. Parsons or Mr. Losky, did I say it correctly?
Close enough.
I don't want to mispronounce anyone's name. I know how that feels. Um, some clarity questions. I know you put up a slide that kind of gave a time, like the phases of what happens. You gave us your phase, um, as far as like, it says only a 12-month, um, period, but you guys are working to complete it in like 10 months. We're approaching eight months, right?
Yeah.
Okay. You don't have to go back to it.
I'll try.
It's okay. Um, so would you by chance, and I understand that you can only stay in your lane and answer the questions that you are able to answer. But would you guys have a, by chance, know exactly, once it leaves you guys and you're done with the study, how long will it take DOT to do the environmental portion of it?
Um, so the PEL process that Jacob was describing, it's, that stands for Planning and Environmental Linkages. And, um, that's really a federal process that helps expedite, um, the environmental, really the transition from feasibility into environmental clearance. Regional Planning Commission cannot do the environmental clearance. We are prohibited by law. But what we can do is, and what we have done in this project, is reach out to the state, to the Louisiana Department of Transportation Development, their environmental folks, um, their, their planning folks and go, we're, you know, we're working on this, we're partners on this, we're keeping them in the loop every step of the way. And we've consulted with Federal Highway Administration, um, to, um, determine the one of five PEL processes you have to select and to come to agreement with our leadership committee that this is the way we're going to tackle this. But essentially what it comes down to is documentation. So we're going to document our process so well that hopefully at the end of the day, the state can look at all of our information and say, um, we are, you know, we're good with it and we don't have to repeat it. Um, what often happens is feasibility, when a project, we've done our feasibility, when it goes into environmental, it's like they start over, they start again almost. And this would shorten that process. It would make it much quicker, um, which I think is to the benefit of St. Bernard Parish because essentially it moves it forward quicker. So in order to answer your question, how long does it normally take to get through the environmental process? I mean, once they pick it up, they have to write a scope, they have to, you know, hire consultants just like we did. They have to move those things forward. We're teeing them up and hopefully they'll pick it up and run with it um, as soon as, you know, we're, our work is complete. Um, but we don't control them, we don't control their funding source. Um, we don't know, um, you know, what their plan is, but we are doing everything that we can to make sure that there's a, a clean handoff and they have all the information. Everything is very, going to be very well documented.
So, um, I, and I understand what you're saying. So typically, usually when you guys hand it off, that it is a strong possibility they may start a whole new set of studies instead of just rolling with the paperwork that you gave.
Well, I, like I said, we're holding hands all the way through the process. So I don't think that's going to be a possibility.
Okay.
Um, you know, it, it just, it expedites that and essentially they don't have to repeat the work that we've done already.
So it's not really a domino effect as you're working, you're providing information.
Yes.
They're prepping and moving on.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, um, you know, the, you know, the port had come here and, and gave us some, uh, information. And basically when they're up and running and they roll and you're looking at possibly 1,800 trucks a day, not counting the rail system. Uh, when you had your little, uh, presentation, you looked like they had a little dot at the end, five years, maybe they'll be starting to, I don't know, finishing the roads or to, you know, to help alleviate the traffic. But, you know, that sounds like that's real aggressive. But let's say the studies, the wetland studies and all of this slows up the building of these highways that are supposed to help out with the transportation. And the port gets ahead of building up rapidly because time is money and it's all, it's all about the money. Time is money and they're going to want to get as many trucks on the road as possible in the shortest amount of time to make money. If these outlets aren't built with the traffic on, on our highways, what the, what the number one deal is, safety on the highways, is there somebody, is there a department with the state that says you can't have 1,800 trucks on the road or you can't have 900 trucks a day using Judge Perez St. Bernard Highway Parish Road because it's not safe? Is there a government entity that's going to say, tell the port, no, you can only have, make up a number, you can only have 100? Is there somebody that will stop this port from just piling the trucks on, on our roads that, you know, because you haven't gotten ahead to build the new ones? I mean, that takes time. You just don't cut a road across the marsh, you know? All of that takes time with studies and everything. Is there, is there entity for the state that's going to tell the port, you can't have 1,000 trucks a day because we don't have the infrastructure with the roads to handle it?
On the enforcement side, that's, I can't answer that question. I don't, I don't have that answer.
Okay.
Is that it, Mr. Rodriguez?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. I have a, a couple of questions. Um, as far as the survey, well, first of all, who, who, um, paid for the study that you did?
Um, uh, it, I believe came in part out of, um, SCP, our Surface Transportation Funding. It's a federal funds that accrue to our region for planning, come through our entity. Um, and the local match is the 20, it's 80/20, 20% match came from the state legislature that went to the Port of New Orleans and that was used to, as the local match.
So the, the, the study that was done?
That we're doing now.
Was 80%?
It's 80% federal funds, 20% local. And local can be either St. Bernard Parish could put it up or the Port of New Orleans could put it up or the state could put it up. So local sort of encapsulates, um, non-federal.
Okay. And who requested the study?
Um, I think it really is, it was, um, sort of bubbled up. So I think it was both the port and I think some concerns from the parish as well.
Okay. So the federal government didn't request the, the study?
No, it doesn't work that way.
Since they're paying 80%?
No, it, the, it doesn't work that way.
Okay.
The, um, the federal funds just, um, are allocated to the state of Louisiana and to our region. And, um, the priorities are basically set by the state or by the, you know, local governments.
Is it fair to say the port didn't pay for the feasibility study, that it was all tax dollar monies?
Um, well, I mean, I guess they requested it. It came out of capital outlay.
So it was all taxpayer money, right?
Um.
House Bill 2.
Yeah.
Capital outlays, House Bill 2.
Yeah.
So all the state legislators.
And I, and I realize y'all are just the messengers tonight.
Yeah.
But you also have to understand our frustration also. As Mr. Warner put it very succinctly, you know, it's, it's arrogance and we, you know, we, we hear bits and pieces and, you know, um, instead of being the friendly neighbor, corporate neighbor that they should be with the people of St. Bernard Parish in the school system, you know, we, there's definitely a lack of communication and cooperation. And, um, as far as the survey goes, and I appreciate seeing some numbers, what, what, what's going to be done with the survey, the 274? There was 274 responses?
Yeah. Um, so it's just.
About the traffic?
So the process that we're following is really falls under the National Environmental Policy Act. So there are, there's public outreach that we really, as a public agency, conduct, that we have to conduct and we do this with all of our feasibility studies. So there's always, we try to have good community outreach and make sure that, um, people from, that are affected have a chance to voice their opinions. And that's exactly what the, the webpage and the survey tried to collect. So that basically informs, it informs, um, our understanding of the concerns that the, that the public has and that's how we're using it. So, um, you know, and that's very typical.
Would it change anything?
Well, I'm sure it will change. It'll help determine, um, what some of these alternatives are at the end of the day, you know, which ones are, um.
Carried forward. Through the environmental.
To carry forward, yeah.
So we, we're not going to give recommendations. We're going to have, uh, alignments and spot short-term slash near-term improvements that can be, um.
On, on existing.
Unexisting, yeah.
On the existing roadway as well as this larger, larger, more, um, involved project.
It's going to look like a spaghetti lines crossing here, doing this. So at the public meeting number two, we'll have display boards and we definitely encourage everyone to come out. And that's going to be like the first look of where, where it's possibly going to, uh, potential go for our new road, proposed roadway and what the existing road improvements will also look like. Uh, addition of, of pedestrian sidewalks, uh, widens, uh, median closures, just trying to limit and that's the science behind taking the traffic counts. But that was, the model's going to spit out, uh, lack of better word, sorry, but, um, it'll determine where those hotspots are that need improvements. And some of the community feedback can be overlaid and said, yeah, it says it right here. This is definitely a problem spot. So the, the science behind it is kind of backed up by the local involvement.
And when will that meeting take place? You weren't sure?
The end of Jul-, uh, July or early August.
And where will it take place?
We are still determining the location.
Okay. Will that be publicized?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. It's going to have to be 30 days out. It'll be a public notice. It'll be in the paper. And, uh, it'll be on our website and I plan to have it in front of the parish council at two, at least two, uh, council meetings prior. And, uh, we can also send it to Ms. Doris.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And we appreciate y'all coming tonight.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Vochek?
Yeah. You know, as many people around here said, nobody wants a school with a terminal or container terminal around it. If the, you know, if the board decides to relocate, part of the problem is, Mr. Warner was talking about, is where to put it within the community that the children live, but also looking at what these potential alternatives are. I've heard things like east of the Violet Canal, going straight back to the 40 Arpin, then crossing the canal and hooking up with 510 I-10 system. But I've also heard, and I don't know, you know, you hear so many rumors, you don't even know. Would you consider, and I realize you're giving alternatives, that you're looking at traffic patterns, you're doing your data analysis, you're saying that, I mean, I guess worst case scenario is the parish can accommodate all this traffic. You don't need to do anything. All the way to, the parish obviously can't accommodate all of the increased, potential increased traffic and an elevated roadway must be built. Um, but are there any alternatives being considered that run across the Violet Canal where the current bridge is over the canal, crossing parallel to that and then shooting back to the 40 Arpin? Because there's a concern is if any of that's an alternative, then if you place a school in close proximity, that would not be maybe the best place to put it. So could you tell us at this time if that's even a consideration or something that could potentially be advanced as one of the alternatives? That it would come up a little bit, crossing the Violet Canal at the current bridge and then hooking over?
So we don't have that information yet, but it will, hopefully the next month it has to come out. So we're working on it now and once we have all the, the traffic analysis done, we'll have a better idea. So at this time, the answer is, I'm sorry, but no, we don't have that.
But I, maybe I could suggest that, that the concern that you have, if you would maybe put that in an email to us, then what that location is that you have a concern about, that would inform.
Well, anything on this side of the Violet Canal. I mean, we would not want, um, say a roadway to cross parallel to that over the Violet Canal and then shoot back toward the 40 Arpin. That any elevated roadway alternatives would go straight back east of the Violet Canal where the current that property is, it's going to be built, back toward the 40 Arpin, then run along, cross over the Violet Canal and hook up to the 510 I-10 corridor to have the least amount of, um, traffic on actual roadways or coming around anywhere near what we, where we potentially may move this school. You know, you sure don't want to move it and then have that pathway right alongside of it. And I think that's one of the things Mr. Warner has been asking about. I know he's asked me several times and I don't have an answer to that. But I have heard from other people, and again, it might be just rumors because you hear so many things that are rumors. But that would certainly not be something that I don't think any of the communities in that area would want, including the community that will house, you know, that come where these children actually live.
So, I mean, again, that's, um, helped inform us. So I don't know, do you have a good picture of the route? Okay.
Okay.
So that, that's helpful.
Okay. And my second question is, okay, once, if your study is coming out with these alternatives or potential placements for someone else to decide where, if anything, will be. And say it comes out that we do need an elevated roadway, do you have, and I know you have experience with that, I would think, do you have any idea how long it takes to build one of these things? Say, assuming that it's going to go east of Violet Canal, back to the 40 Arpin, then run along and hook up with 510 I-10 corridor. An, uh, project of that magnitude, a length of time that it would take once the funding is there, the approvals and they actually get to construct it, how long does that normally?
I can say off of facts based on that elevated LA 1, Grand Isle, uh, from the four lane, from, uh, is it Golden Meadow to, to Leeville? That part they're building right now, uh, I want to say it's roughly seven and a half miles. And the contract duration is four years, four and a half years.
I'm sorry, four and a half years? Okay.
Somewhere around there.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we had some other questions. Mr. Rodriguez?
The next, uh, I went to the meeting y'all had at the church and it was a presentation. A lot of people went to that meeting and thought they were going to be able to ask questions. And when they was informed they wasn't allowed to ask questions, a lot of people got upset. At this next meeting, when you, when you put out the time and the place, can y'all maybe put on, if questions will be allowed? Because some people are going, you know, might go there thinking they can ask questions and y'all abruptly cut everybody off at the church, not y'all, but in general. Yo, well, we're not taking any questions. This is just for a presentation. Well, I went to the church and I thought a lot, everybody thought, or most people thought questions were going to be allowed to be asked and they wasn't. So I'd appreciate it when y'all put out the next date and the time and all that, all questions going to be allowed. be allowed. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else who hadn't spoken yet? Okay, Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I have a very quick question. Have you all been provided with the two plots of land that the port is recommending that we could choose between if they were to go into partnership with us to relocate the school? Have you all been provided with that information?
I don't have that.
We don't.
Okay, I definitely think it would be helpful for you all to at least see the property and where they're located-
Yeah.
-because I can imagine, especially with what the superintendent has said, that if you all understand where kind of we have an offer to put the school, that it would maybe inform some of those potential options to ensure that our students and their transportation opportunities and their safety are taken into consideration.
Yes.
Loved it.
But I would say that would have to come from the port, because it's not really something that we have, it is from, it's the port that has that information.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Rodney?
Ms. Harris basically was asking a question that was getting ready to ask, but we do have the potential sites that was given to us, so would it be safe that, Ms. Vouchet, are we going to send an email asking some questions?
Correct.
Can we just give what was presented to us as possible spots for the school, so that way that can be considered in that study? Because that is very important, like Mr. Rodriguez said and Ms. Vouchet said, that if there's going to be extra amount of traffic in that area, we certainly don't want the kids at a terminal, but we don't want them in the middle of traffic either. So, I mean, if that's something, that's the potential spots that they gave us, we can provide that in the email, because then that'll be something we're giving you guys as far as being a part of this study, because the study is all-inclusive. You had community partners, stakeholders, and everybody, so I would think it would be very beneficial if we had something to say as a school board towards that study of how we feel about that. Another thing, and this is not a question, more of a comment, thank you guys for coming. You provided a lot of clarity, I know, on my behalf, when it came down to seeing things and possibly what traffic would look like. Another thing is, thank you for taking the punches to the port, because you guys have been asked a lot of questions, and I saw the fate looks, it was out of your scope, but you handled it very well, and thank you for just being very generous and understanding of our questions.
Hopefully it was helpful.
Anyone else have questions?
I just have one more. On the funding, you said that that determination hasn't been made yet for this, if there is a roadway? The determination as far as funding, do you know anything about that?
Projects of this magnitude, I mean, it's not like the state of Louisiana has, you know, a half a billion dollars sitting in a pot somewhere. It's typically, they, there's opportunities for discretionary grants that they apply for, other state funds, state legislature contributes, I mean, it, a lot of times comes from multiple sources, so it's not, it's not known today, but we know what all the possible pots of funding are, and we'll kind of identify those in our report so that we know what's, what's out there, and it provides sort of the next step of how to go forward. But projects of this magnitude or, you know, even smaller ones, it takes a little time to, to, for them to get the funding, you know, lined up, so, okay.
And then it was mentioned that you're trying to complete this study in, by, in two months?
Shooting for the end of August.
Okay, so would y'all-
Depends on-
Go ahead.
So, end of August makes 10 months. The contracts, our contracts are a year long, so we're trying to get it done in 10 months, expedite it, but it does take a lot of time when you're coming down to reviews and you're submitting, and you have to get someone to review it and send it back, and so it's inter action. And DOTD is reviewing it, and they have a lot on their plate as well. So, it's a, it's a review process, and again, it is inter, so we're trying to, trying to get out of our court so they can review it, get it back, and it'll be, it'll morph in time, yeah, right? It'll, it'll take some time. So, it'll be out of our control if we get it in, when do we get it back? So, some reviews have taken a day, some have taken a month. So, that's, that's kind of, it's out of our control, we just want to get it done, and obviously, this is a high-profile project, so it will be viewed by many internally, outside of our consultant world, but inside of the state agency world.
Okay, thank you. Ms. White?
Yeah, I was just wondering, when you do the study, do you take into consideration, like, who owns the land and that goes into, you know, play?
At this time, it's just a 200-foot corridor, and we don't get into, we look at hotspots being, if it's a emergency response type, it's a fire station, a shelter station, a school, we do look at some of those.
You know, if you're going to shoot to 510, there's different, you know, people that's going to own the land, and I was just wondering, how do you do that so fast?
Oh, no, this is stage zero of many, so it's conceptual phase, and it's looking at a 200-foot corridor wide. So, it's just going to be a line with a 200-foot offset, so 100 each direction, and it's, that's what it's going to look at. And so, anything inside that footprint in the environmental phase will be actual boots on the ground, once it gets to that preferred alignment, which is the one, so to speak, which is down the road. So, this is just lines on a paper, so to speak, that's going to get dwindled down and carved out and revised, and it can be changed through the environmental process. So, right now, we do a windshield survey, is what it's called, for environmental, so a lot of times, the state has a bald eagle's nest. They have a sighting, and it's on a website, and it shows here, where we don't go through there. We stay away from any endangered threatened species, things of that nature, so.
Ms. Vouchet?
Just one quick final, I hope, question that I have. I realize this is the lower St. Bernard Transportation Network feasibility study, but when you look at the shaded area, you're coming up toward the Araby area. You're looking at traffic patterns, and we've all been talking about the trucks coming in, but you did mention the railway as well. And I know in the Araby area, we've got the train tracks that cross St. Bernard Highway right here, and that will impact other schools that we have and transportation to and from those schools, and obviously, transportation in and out of the city for the residents of St. Bernard. Are you also looking at some type of an elevated overpass over the rail? Railroad tracks, if that is warranted in some way? Is that part of your study to deal with the railway in Araby?
Yes, we are, that might fall under short-term improvement, right? So, something to the existing roadway. If there is a need to grade-separate the roadway traffic from rail, we'll call that out. Hopefully, at the end of this, we'll understand, you know, how many trains per day, the length of the trains, the type of car queue that could back up because you're, it's stopping traffic for X number of minutes, and so that leads to the potential for naming that as a possible project.
Yeah. It came to mind, because I was on my way back from Baton Rouge today to come back here for the meeting, and I got stopped by the train crossing right there, and I sat there for quite a while waiting for it to pass, and it just seemed to me, if there's going to be increased railway traffic as well, what is going to happen in the Araby area?
Yeah, and that's the reason why we have those counts at those crossings.
Ms. Harris?
That's my last one. So, you said for construction of a road, like the elevated LA-1, it's about four and a half years. So, theoretically, from today to end of construction, if that was something that we had to do, was build another road, are we talking six years? Are we talking seven years? Are we talking 10 years? On average, what, what would that look like? Because, I mean, you know, quite frankly, outside of my role as a school board member, right, I'm a community member, and I know that these trucks will be passing either in front of my house on St. Bernard Highway or behind my house on Judge Perez, and I cross the railroad tracks every day to go to work, and I am petrified at what is going to happen over the next four years, six years, before we get some sort of relief for day-to-day, and God forbid, during hurricane season. So, six years, eight years? What would it look like? If, if you know today that a new road needed to be built, how long is that process?
Funding.
It comes down to funding.
I'm sorry?
So, it comes down to funding and contract and negotiation and to the contractor, and if the funding was here today and you started breaking ground tomorrow, if seven miles was four and a half, it depends on the linear footage of the roadway, but, I mean, if it was seven miles, then it would be four and a half years to complete.
If everything was done, but the whole, this whole process, right, the, your process is almost done, but then there's another process that happens, right?
Correct, correct.
Six years? You say, I mean, like, how much longer before construction, I guess is what I'm getting at, is how much more of a process exists before construction would even start?
It's hard to, it's, it's, it's hard to say a number, because there's so many variables.
Just, but, but a guess, like, does it, is it normally like two years? Well, I mean, I'm just like, seriously, like, is it normally two years for the environmental study and all of these other things to-
Funding.
The state and the federal government clearly want this port-
Right.
-despite the fact that we clearly do not, right? So, if they're going to be behind this, right, the money's going to flow, money's already flowing to the port. I think in the last two years, they've been allocated about $450 million between federal and state funds, so money's going to flow. So, assuming that they don't have hiccups with funding, are we looking at another year before construction contracts could even be considered, or are we looking at two years before that? And I know you don't want to answer, but we, we deserve to know how long-
DOTD has that control. It can be environmental process a year, two years, and then it all depends on the delivery, so they have different type of that design-build. They have a Seymour, which is like a design-build more kind of deal, or is it, is it traditional design-bid-build, where it means the engineering has it, when engineering's done, then it goes to the contractor. So, the other one is design-build and debris, and all the different alternative delivery methods expedite the construction. So, the engineer's working with the contractor same time, so you don't have the whole engineering design and then bid it out and then have the whole construction. So, typically, it's a compressed timeframe, and without knowing utilities and relocations, and there's a lot of variables that go into the construction piece of it.
And there's nothing to say from, from what you all are used to or aware of, and this may be completely out of your purview, so if it is, please just say it's out of your purview, but regardless of where you are with this transportation study, if the port has its permits to start construction, they could open this terminal without any of these additional supports in place, and we would just have to absorb the traffic on a daily basis until something was finished?
Our study is there to try to mitigate some, this possible future, you know, we're trying to help St. Bernard get some, get some mitigation-
On the ground.
Yeah, something on the ground. Their permitting process is completely separate from what we do. I mean, we are sharing traffic data, I mean, because they've collected some, and they're having to give us their inputs into our evaluation and within our feasibility study to understand how many trucks and that sort of thing. But their permitting process is completely independent of what we do, so, yeah, we have no control on that.
Because they're talking about being fully built out by 2032, I think is their date, and that is eight years, which it sounds like it would take at least close to that amount of time to get a road completed. So, if they are going to have a terminal with containers and added trucks on the road in the next three years, we just deal with that for an indeterminate amount of time and hope to goodness that our houses don't shake to the ground from the added traffic.
Well, as I said, I mean, our analysis is hopefully going to result in something that will help mitigate the future of any impacts, but we're independent of the port, so.
And I really appreciate it. Thank you so much, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Rodriguez had another question?
Yeah, this is just an observation. You made the comment, which, and I found, you know, I know it's true, of course, that if they had an eagle's nest, then you'd have to move the road and go around the eagle's nest, because it's the eagle's nest, it's protected by the state and the federal government. So, the port, or y'all would have to move the, the street or the expressway because of the eagle. So, we have a port who just says, "We coming in, the state let them." Some would say, "Maybe the parish let them." So, now we have the state saying the port's going to come right here to Violet, Louisiana, no consideration for the school, but they worried about the eagles. So, we could get lucky, and a young pair of eagles is flying around and sees a telephone pole in Violet, says, "We're going to build a nest there, because they're not experienced, they should be in the woods." So, if they built the nest on top of telephone pole, maybe the state and the federal government would come in, "Well, we can't have a port around the eagles, because the eagles have a nest there." This is all, this is all a joke, almost, it's, it's really funny, nothing to do with y'all, but they got a lot of priorities, and look, I love the eagles. Hopefully, the eagles go build a nest for the school, and they won't be able to move the school. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions at this time?
No, just to, thank you very much. When I called you, y'all were very, very gracious in agreeing to come. You're just dealing with people in a community who are still waiting for the Florida Avenue Bridge that was promised, who is 50 years ago.
Yes.
So, you can understand the skepticism, but thank you very much.
Thank y'all very much. We appreciate it.
Yeah, he, he left me with a copy here, and I'll make sure you get it.
Okay, great, thank you again. Okay. Next item on the agenda is an education item. Ms. White?
Thank you. Point one, new social studies and science curriculum. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I have with me this evening some of the instructional staff to help me provide some information for you guys on some new social studies curriculum materials for grades three to eight, and some new science curriculum materials for middle and high school. And just to kind of explain the reason for the transition, as you know, the state released some new social study standards, and all they released this year with it was a framework, and it's really not ideal for the students or the teachers just to learn from a framework, so a company named Gallup Aid International developed a whole curriculum with some wonderful resources for the students that we were able to get our hands on and purchase for next school year, so the curriculum staff is going to give you some information and explain those pieces, and I think it'll be exciting for you to hear what the students get a chance to use. Secondly, we're going to move to some new curriculum in middle school and high school science. We did have a three-year contract with Amplify, but we found another product called Open Sci Ed. It really is student-centered, and we think it's going to be a good move to make the science a little more hands-on and make the information a little more digestible for the students. The more you do, the more you can learn, so I don't want to steal any of their thunder, because I have some amazing people behind me who is the backbone of our instructional staff, and they're our biggest support for our teachers. They help our teach St. Bernard, our new teachers, our veteran teachers, they help provide PD, they do debriefs, they do observations, they do whatever they can, they work nights, weekends, holidays, I always say they work more than I would ever ask them to work, they take it upon themselves to do whatever they see as a need, and if I ever ask them to do anything, within minutes before I'm finished speaking, they have a Google Doc up shared, and they're taking notes on everything I'm saying, and they already have a plan of what they're going to do, and it might be done before I put my head in the pillow to sleep at night. So, it's amazing, their effectiveness and their commitment, and they are behind-the-scenes workers, but they are our biggest support for the teachers, so I did, I did want to take a chance to say that. And what we'll have, we'll do tonight, we'll have our ELA and Social Studies, Middle School and Elementary School Instructional Staff present the information on Gallup Aid, that's Ms. Rebecca Gio, she's Middle School ELA and Social Studies Instructional Coordinator. We also have Ms. Amy White Stein, who's our Elementary ELA and Social Studies Instructional Coordinator, then for the middle and high school- Then for the Middle and High School Science, we're gonna do Middle School, grades six to eight, and then Biology, Chemistry, and Physics with Open Sai Ed. So to present that, I have Stephanie Sago, who's our Middle School Science and Math Instructional Coordinator. Have Alicia Capstick, who's our Planetarium Coordinator, but also with some of her time, she helps with Middle School Science Curriculum. And then finally, Ms. Melissa Moynan, who's our High School Instructional Coach, who works with Social Studies and Science. So, um, without any further ado, we'll start off with Ms. Rebecca Gio and Ms. Amy White Stein to present the Galipaid curriculum that will implement in grades three to eight, Social Studies.
Good evening, everyone. Um, as Ms. Lamanna mentioned, um, we did get some new Social Study Standards last year. So, um, what the state did was reconfigure the standards in a way that helps students gain and retain historical content. Then they went through and trickled Louisiana history throughout those standards where appropriate. The best way that the curriculum team found to teach our students these standards was through the Galipaid curriculum. Yes. So on page three of your handout, um, you will see an overview of Galipaid and the pictures of the covers of each book. And those are from grades three through eight. Um, Galipaid is a comprehensive curriculum that is aligned, 100% aligned to the new standards. Each third through eighth grade student will receive their own consumable workbook as well as gain digital access to the same workbook. Galipaid has a step-by-step teaching guide that will build in, with built-in scaffolds and differentiation in order to meet the needs of all students. So, this is Galipaid's learning process. So basically, it starts with the big question and it's the big question in each chapter. And once a kid can answer that, they have then met that standard. Then it goes to, a little bit down is the supporting questions, which are those stepping stones to that big question. If they can successfully answer that, those supporting questions, then the daily objective has been mastered. Then, um, each student will have an evidence collector within each chapter. This is for like, their, uh, to track their reasoning and evidence throughout the chapter so that way they can eventually answer that big question. In addition to the evidence collector, students are given a vocabulary tracker. This tool will help students learn academic vocabulary in context rather than in isolation. And then, um, Galipaid comes with built-in formative assessments within each chapter as well as summative, summative assessments. Those are called expert tracks. Those are completely editable so that way we can meet the rigor of the LEAP 2025 assessment. Now, Ms. Amy White Stein is going to tell you how this meets the needs of all of our learners.
Okay, so one of the things we really liked about Galipaid is all of the resources and extra things that were available for the students and the teachers and not just simply a workbook or a textbook. So one of the things that they have available, um, to the teachers is what they call their teaching tools. And these are things that are available to help assist teachers in planning their lessons. They're there to help teachers enhance their instruction while saving time. They're organized in the same order as a student book, units, and chapters so it's easy for the teachers to access and utilize. And they're designed with the goal of helping to engage the students with the content that they're learning. The tools that you see will help the teachers to build their lessons, to launch their instruction while keeping their students engaged. They're meant to help connect the content that they're learning in Social Studies with that big essential question they're trying to answer. There's things built in there to help boost the rigor with things like primary source analysis, project-based learning opportunities, different types of graphic organizers that they can use. There's literacy strategies built in, vocabulary, writing. There's all these things that are going to help, um, build on the base of the curriculum that they have available. And you can see, um, the teaching tool library on your sheet. That's just some of the, um, things that are available to the teachers, um, but that's not all of them. So there are additional writing prompts. Like Rebecca mentioned, there's vocabulary builders, projects, different primary sources, study guides, literacy activities, interactive workbooks. There's map practice activities, interactive read-alouds where the students can, um, listen to the student text online. So that's one of the great features of the curriculum. If you go to the next page, um, we're just gonna talk for a minute about, um, how Galipaid helps to make learning accessible for all learners in our classroom. So it's designed to meet the needs of all learners in the classroom and includes extensions as well as scaffolds built in throughout the whole manual and, um, book. So the scaffolds are built-in supports that the teachers can use to help students master the new content that they're learning. And as the students learn and become more competent, those supports are taken away. But there'll be guiding questions and things, if this student is not, if the students aren't getting it, then try this, do this, you know, say this. So those supports are built in throughout, um, as well as extended learning opportunities for those students who are ready for more challenging activities. They've mastered the content and now they need to be pushed, um, to elevate their learning, their achievement, and their understanding of the concepts. Okay, so that is another feature of the curriculum. And then, something that we really liked about it was they offer an online component and it's called Go Galipaid Online. And it's an online platform for the teachers as well as the students. So the students will be able to access their, um, student book online. So they'll be able to complete activities online. As well as the teacher side of it will allow the teachers to, um, assign content and activities to the students. The students can take assessments that the teachers will assign. And, um, some of them will be self-graded, some of the teachers will grade partially, but then they can provide immediate feedback to the students online. It will help the student, the teachers in creating custom assignments, differentiating. There's, um, different reports available that'll let the teachers analyze, you know, the results to see what students are meeting what standards. And it'll also, it gives, um, things that the teachers can project in the classroom to make the learning more meaningful.
So on page eight, um, one of the great pros of this curriculum is that it does start with our third grade students and then it moves through their middle school years all the way till eighth grade. So students will be accustomed to this curriculum, obviously starting in third grade throughout their middle school years. We've also started collaboration with Mr. Cassar to plan field trips to historical sites within St. Bernard Parish in correlation to where they fall within the Galipaid curriculum. And then addition to those things, we're excited to include our parents and guardians in the learning process. So each chapter in Galipaid starts with an at-home support letter that teachers can send home to, um, parents and guardians. And it gives them like ideas and different websites that they can go on to assist their student. And then in closing, we wanted to inform you how we're going to support our teachers. At both the elementary and middle school levels, teachers will have a training in August on Galipaid. In addition to that, we're offering optional summer PD sessions. They will also get continued support through cadre, teacher leader meetings, other district PDs like November and January, um, district learning walks, and then obviously through their PLC meetings. Our teachers are aware of the addition to, of Galipaid and we've received like an overwhelming amount of support. They are excited to have a curriculum. I know I speak for all of us when I say we are very excited about it and we can't wait to see how it goes. Oops, sorry.
We'll now talk about the Open Sai Ed curriculum for grades six and then, six through eight, and then Biology, Chemistry, and Physics. So we'll have Ms. Stephanie Sago, Alicia Capstick, and Melissa Moynan.
Um, before, before you start with that, I just want to say how wonderful these two are. Amy and Rebecca, who've done an incredible job with our elementary and middle school curriculum. And I think as they said, the, the teachers are excited to actually have a Social Studies curriculum. All these years that we've had the state standards, as you know, there has been no text, no instructional materials that align to the state's standards. So this is going to be, um, I think, well-received by our teachers. This particular product has been vetted by them. And while I think anything would be an improvement, they feel, we feel this is going to help tremendously. And it's about time that the state did recognize that we needed some high-quality materials to address the Social Studies standards. So thank y'all very much, appreciate that.
Good evening. And the same is true with the science materials. So you have a packet in front of you. It says Secondary Science Curriculum. If you'll pull that out, it's blue and orange. I'm gonna start on slide two, Louisiana Student Standards for Science. So a decade ago, the next generation science standards were born. And these are national science standards that seek to improve science education for all students. In 2017, the LDOE released the Louisiana Student Standards for Science. And these are basically our standards that were modeled after the NGFS. And the developers really thought about what students should know and what they should do to compete in our communities. They built standards that were founded on three dimensions. First is the disciplinary core ideas. These are the most important aspects within a science discipline. The second, the cross-cutting concepts. And these describe concepts linking all domains in science. And thirdly, the science and engineering practices. And these are behaviors that scientists and engineers engage in as they investigate and build models and theories about the natural world. Going to slide three, what is Open Sai Ed? So Open Sai Ed is a high-quality, open-source curriculum. It was developed by a consortium of 10 states across the nation, including Louisiana and our leading educators and science researchers. It is one that aligns with our new standards and it engages students in practices that drive learning and teaches them how to think about science so that they can find success in the classroom. And now moving to slide four, I'm gonna talk about why we chose Open Sai Ed. So as I just discussed, it is in alignment with the LSSS, those Louisiana Student Science Standards. And also those core ideas that I just discussed. It is highly rated. Open Sai Ed earned the green light from ED reports. And it was also highly praised by the Science Peer Review Panel. It is investigative, it's phenomenon-based, it's student-centered. Students are leading the questioning, the investigating, and the problem-solving. It is teacher-facilitated, so we're moving away from teachers giving lectures and instead they're supporting students in their learning journey. And it's collaborative. It allows students to learn from one another and scaffold off of one another. So in sum, this instructional model is designed to align to all the best practices that we know. We know this is how students learn best. And finally, Open Sai Ed is inclusive. Developers use a universal design-for-learning framework to create a curriculum that can provide learning opportunities for all. The units are designed with differentiation in mind, allowing teachers to adapt the materials as needed for their students. And teacher additions include differentiation strategies and provide information about adapting the content, the process, or the product for the lessons for those students with special needs, English language learners, and those with high interest in certain subjects. Open Sai Ed provides Spanish student additions for our Spanish-speaking students. And they even offer strategies for teachers to support chronically absent students. For all of these reasons, we're excited about our adoption of this curriculum. And now to Ms. Capstick, and she's gonna lead you in a deep dive of the instructional model.
Thank you, Ms. Moynan.
Thank you.
So if you look at slide five, you'll see the instructional model that the Open Sai Ed process follows. And all of these units, each grade level covers six different units. All of these units are built on a storyline and try and relate to students and their experiences. So they all begin with an anchoring phenomenon. And so I'm gonna give an example for one of our sixth-grade units, it's contact forces. And so the students are actually investigating, why do things sometimes get damaged when they hit one another? And they really went right after our students because they're gonna talk about their cell phones. And we've all had that horror of dropping our cell phones and wondering, is that screen gonna be damaged? Or is it gonna be okay? And so the students really start to investigate that. Why sometimes do these things get damaged and why are other times they're okay? In that anchoring phenomenon, they're gonna do, uh, what we call a notice and wonder. What did you notice happening in the videos or whatever the phenomenon that is presented to them? And what did you wonder about it? And they're gonna build on their common experiences. They're gonna talk about other collisions that have happened where damage has occurred and when damage hasn't occurred, when they thought it would. Moving along, that develops what we call the DQB, the Driving Question Board. So as they wonder, students come up with their own questions about the process. What caused this to happen? Why did it happen? And they're gonna post these questions literally all around their classrooms. And they're gonna connect between the phenomenon and their real-life experiences. The next step on our instructional model is the navigation routine. And just like the GPS in our car, that navigation routine is there for them to understand. Where are we? Where do we wanna go? And how are we gonna get there? So during the navigation routine, the students are gonna take those questions from their wonderings and they're gonna link that learning across the lesson and back to the questions about their phenomenon. This is where students become real problem solvers and partners in figuring out how the world works because they're gonna develop their own investigations. This is where they're gonna figure out the how. The next step is the investigation routine, where the students are gonna gather additional information from the ideas that they want. Those questions that they developed on that Driving Question Board, they're gonna develop the investigation and the teacher's just gonna be the facilitator of that process. They're gonna gather additional information to answer those questions because Open Sai Ed does not follow a typical lab procedure that some of us may have experienced where our teachers told us, this is step one, this is step two. In Open Sai Ed, the students are gonna develop that investigation and they're gonna analyze the data that comes from that investigation, which is gonna get our students to those higher-order thinking skills that we really want them to have in order to be successful in the world. The next step is putting the pieces-together routine. And that's one of the steps that we will visit a couple of times throughout the process. But in the putting the pieces-together routine, this is where the students are gonna come to a consensus on what we figured out so far and what do we still need to know. After that putting the pieces-together routine, we have a problematizing routine. So students, as, as we go through the investigation, sometimes it leads to new questions. So this is where students will address those new questions that have arisen based on their investigations, based on their models, and based on their design solutions. And that, students will be able to extend their thinking and revise their ideas during these steps. So then you see it kinda circles back through. We'll go through the investigation routine based on the new questions that they have. And they'll gather additional information through that experimentation to finally answer all of their questions on the Driving Question Board. When they put the pieces together again, that second time, that's when they really have a better idea and understanding of explaining the original phenomenon from step one. And at the end of the routine, those DQB questions should all be answered and they can apply what they've learned to new, new related phenomenon. So they're constantly revising their models to explain throughout the unit. And so here we have like a little Open Sai Ed classroom, it's a very brief video. Do we not have sound? It does look like it's up. I'm not sure why the sound's not coming through. But basically, what, what's happening here, the teacher has posed a question. It's actually about this contact forces one that we're talking about. It's a, a sixth-grade unit for us, but the students are investigating why those things break. And if I apply more force to it, will it break? If the speed is faster, will it break? And you'll see them actually experimenting on that in just a moment. Apologize that there's no sound on the video coming through.
Your narration is great.
Appreciate it. So they go through the, the different processes. And the students are talking about how they're not just sitting there reading out of a textbook, how they're having the discussions. Because we know that the ones that are doing the talking are the ones that are doing the learning. So you could see here, they're applying some force and we have graham crackers going all over the place. over the place. Our janitors will love us. But as they go through, they're really going through all of the different Driving Question Board and checking off what they've learned so far. And the kids say, when they're finished, their brains hurt, because they're not just sitting there, they're doing all the work. And so then I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sago, and she's going to talk a little bit about the materials that we have and the supports that we have available to support our teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kapstik. Okay, on Slide 7, you will see the materials available for our students and teachers. Students and teachers will have Chromebooks for digital access to all curriculum materials. The digital platform does integrate with our current Canvas Learning Management System. Teachers will receive printed teacher additions to facilitate teacher planning. Each student will receive a consumable printed workbook. Class sets of kit materials include ready-made labs and other materials necessary for OpenSciEd investigation. And we like to say as a team that it's very similar to HelloFresh Kits, that everything's ready to go. And then on Page 8, Slide 8, you will see our continued teacher support. OpenSciEd does offer on-demand and tutorials and webinars, including pedagogy and instructional supports, teacher instructional videos by unit, supports for emergent multilingual learners, and assist teachers with absent student support strategies. We will offer training in July, along with our continued district professional development days in August, November, and January. And then we will continue our fall and spring cadre sessions throughout the year to help the teachers.
Thank you, ladies.
And I also want to give kudos to this particular team from our middle and high school, Alicia, and Melissa, and Stephanie. They've done an incredible amount of work with this, and I think our teachers are going to be very excited to have these new materials that we can help our students achieve to their greatest potential. So thank you three again. Appreciate you.
Do you have any questions?
I just have a statement. I think me and Mr. Rodriguez are ready to go back to school.
Well, you know how we invite y'all to the cafeteria to serve? We'll invite y'all to the science and social studies class to learn.
Yeah, let's not get carried away. But I want to thank everyone with the presentation. I usually get here, I'm usually sitting here at 5:00, an hour early, and I was outside, it's so hot I can't breathe. And sometimes Mr. Long's here, Ms. Carley's here, and sometimes the door's open and sometimes it's not. So I got to wait for somebody. So I said, man, I can't go out there and get sweaty. And I saw somebody move, I hit the door, it was open, and I want to tell the public. It was great. I come sit down, I got me a Coke, and they were up there working hard, they were practicing. The ones that wasn't practicing at the mic, they were cheering them on, yeah, you sound good. And I tell you what, I had a, the last two, three days, I had bad days. And I needed a good laugh. I think I'm funny, and they were great, and they worked hard. And hopefully y'all come next year, and I'm going to get here exactly at 5:00, not 5:15. Thank y'all so much.
Well, they presented to students, teachers, administrators, supervisors, the superintendent, but never to school board members. So this was their first time, and it is a daunting audience, you know, and so they did just follow, you know, another tough presentation. So they weren't sure if they would be questioned or not, so I said, I'm going to be up there with you, so if you get questioned, I'll be standing by your side. But it turned out okay. They do a phenomenal job. It just was a daunting thing for them to present to you all, as you could imagine.
You should just give them a big hand.
Yes, as you could imagine.
Not a question, ladies, but just a comment. Your presentations were wonderful. We thank you for all your hard work, and the excitement and enthusiasm that you showed and that many of our teachers show in the classroom make students want to learn. So we thank you very much. It was very informative, and we thank you for all your hard work and being so comprehensive and excited and with your enthusiasm also. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to build on that, I want to echo, you know, what Ms. Isart said, and thank you for all of the time that you all are giving, after-hours, nights, weekends. Last month, I was at the MoMA Center for another event, and Ms. Sago pulled me in. She said, come see, we've got cadre, and I want you to see what we're doing with math manipulatives. And there, this group of teachers were, you know, 5:00 after work and a long day of work, building on their knowledge to try to make learning even more engaging and exciting for their students. So that's, we always talk about, we've got the best and the brightest students, but we definitely, we've got the best and brightest, you know, teachers and staff. So thank you for what you do to go above and beyond. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again, ladies. We appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. White. Okay, next item on the agenda, personnel changes for June 2024. Good evening, Ms. Britter.
Good evening. I can vouch for all of those ladies. They either taught for me or taught my sons, phenomenal teachers, so. Okay, you should have your personnel changes in front of you. And we have been busy. The next meeting, you'll see a very big list of hires. But we have no retirees. We have a couple of resignations, people move into different districts, but we have no retirees this time. And I know that Ms. Fochet has some announcements.
Oh, okay. We have been interviewing for some administrative appointments, and tonight we'd like to congratulate our new principal at Araby Elementary School, who's Ms. Andrea Woodward. She is currently the Assistant Principal at Chalmette Elementary School. She's been in our system for many years, has taught at several of our elementary schools, has been an interventionist, a teacher leader, and has done an incredible job to this point. And I know that she is going to be very effective at Araby to take Ms. Corolla's place, who obviously is now here taking Ms. Harleton's place. The, at Smith Elementary, Assistant Principal, Ms. Sharice Clark, who has been a teacher at Smith for many years, has done an excellent job, and has gone through the interview process and was the selection of the principal. So we want to congratulate Sharice Clark as the new Smith Elementary Assistant Principal. And for Andrew Jackson Middle School, the Assistant Principal, Mr. Will Lancaster. Mr. Lancaster has been with us for many years. He is currently at St. Bernard Middle School, leading the Special Education Department. He does an incredible job in servicing and accommodating our students with special needs. He's also been a summer school administrator, as well as Ms. Woodward has been in that role at the elementary level. So we are very excited to have Mr. Lancaster as the new Assistant Principal at Andrew Jackson Middle School.
Are there any questions at this time? Ms. Rogan?
Not a question, but definitely a comment. And a word of celebration for Ms. Clark. I know Ms. Clark, Ms. Clark taught two of my, two or five of my kids. And she was a kindergarten teacher, and just an awesome teacher, really, just a sweet person, but had a very demanding presence in the classroom. So congratulations to Ms. Clark. I know her and Ms. Reddick will be a dynamic duo like Ms. Bailey and Ms. Reddick were. So congratulations to Ms. Clark.
Anyone else? Any questions? I just want to say, I'm glad there's no more retirements, because...
As of today.
As of today. I didn't check my email on the last five minutes.
Well, that's a good thing. And also, congratulations to Ms. Woodward, Ms. Clark, and Mr. Lancaster. We appreciate your applications for administrators, and we wish you the best and know that you would do an excellent job.
And I just had one question on the application process. Do we have a lot of administrators or teachers applying for these positions?
We have several. Not quite as many as I would like to see, to be perfectly honest, but we have, we did have several applying. We want to look into, we had had a cohort for educational leadership a few years ago, and many of these have been, were through that pool. I think it's time that we start a new pool of people for our younger administrators, younger teachers, of course, coming up, who wish to fill those roles as school-based administrators. Extremely challenging positions in today's world, and we need quality people who are well-trained, so.
I went through the cohort, probably, oh God, many, many years ago. It was a great opportunity. If I didn't have that, it would have been hard to do. It's good to do with a cohort around you, so, yeah, I agree.
Okay, anyone else? Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Britter. We appreciate it. Thank you. Next item is an insurance item. Ms. Harris.
Sure. So tonight, 5.1 is renewal of the Access Workers' Comp Insurance. Mr. Fernandez and Mr., from Clements.
Mr. Timothy Clements is here from Clements Insurance Services, our agent of record. And we have renewal for excess workers' compensation insurance. As you know, we're self-insured for workers' compensation. However, as a requirement of being a self-insured program, we are required to have an excess insurance policy in place. And this just covers excess expenses once claims reach a certain level. We have two options available today with different self-insured retentions, or deductibles, you might call it. One with a retention of $500,000 with a premium of $85,781, and one with a retention of $600,000 with a premium of $75,782. Premiums for excess workers' compensation insurance are basically based on payroll, total payroll for your system. So if you look at the bottom, it shows the rates of the policy, which is applied to the payroll of the year that they're looking at to determine the rate. And you see that in two prior years, we have, as an example, our rate this year has gone down. However, since our total payroll has gone up, of course, the premium went up slightly. And we are recommending that we select the policy with a $500,000 retention for a premium of $85,781, which is a few thousand dollars more than the previous year.
Are there any questions? So I only have one, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding it. The rate, the .16, it's because we had fewer instances of claims, and that's why that rate has gone down?
Uh, it's several...
That and the market. Just the workers' comp market is becoming a soft market, and it has been for years, and so rates have just been on the decline, as well as good loss ratio here.
Okay, great. Does any, Mr. Warner?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the administration's request of, that would be 2425A. Right, Mr. Fernandez, on you?
Yes, sir.
And I'll second.
All right. And so we have a motion by Mr. Warner and a second by Ms. Lemoine. Would everyone please vote your machine?
Motion passes 9-0.
Thank you, Mr. Clements. Next item is a Finance Committee item, and Ms. Lou Bowman is not here, so Ms. Jackson, you were the other Finance Committee Chairman, if you would.
So we have item 6. 6.1, request to approve bid tabulation for paper, cleaning, and custodial supplies for the fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30 of 2025. We have Mr. Fernandez here again.
Thank you. In the package, you have the bid tabulation for paper, cleaning, and custodial supplies for next fiscal year. We're recommending the low bidder on each item.
Any questions?
Are there any exceptions to the lowest bid?
No, ma'am.
Bitter?
Not this time.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we send this to the full board.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Lemoine. We have a second by Ms. White. Any other questions, discussions? No? There being none, please pass your vote.
Motion passes 9-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Next item was superintendent's notes. Ms. Fochet.
Okay, just a couple of quick announcements. Students from Trist Middle School attended the National Beta Convention, and they were flying back today, but they called ahead of time and told us how excited they were. They placed second nationally in the robotics competition at the national convention, and third place in the connection invention, convention-invention. I used to say invention-convention, but they're saying it's a convention-invention, where they are, they propose their solution to a particular problem. So I think they might be coming, maybe we'll try to get them here at the next meeting. I think it's really a really great feat, second in robotics, third in convention-invention. Our summer programs are going very, very well at this time, and we've got them in many, many schools throughout the school system, not only our academic summer programs, but our STEM, or STEAM now, summer camp over at MoMA, and our Performing Arts Academy at the Cultural Arts Center. And our representative, Mike Bayham, called me, and he had asked earlier for the names in a little bio about each of our valedictorians that he wanted to get a proclamation for, and he has them. So what we're going to try to do is to contact all nine of them and try to have them here at the next meeting, so he can make that presentation to them, realizing that many of them are starting college early in the summer or have different commitments. But we're going to see who we can gather at the next meeting, and I want to thank Representative Bayham for getting that for our students. And I think it's something that they will really, truly appreciate. So hopefully, we can gather them at the next meeting.
And we want to announce...
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, right in front of me. Performing Arts Academy, as we know that every summer, the students get together with many of our students, from the little ones on up, and the alumni who have been through our schools, and they do a summer presentation, a summer play. This year, it's Something Rotten, and it will be on June 27, 28, 29, and 30. So the last week in June, and I think it's going to be an absolutely wonderful play. It is a musical, even though it's called Something Rotten. And the, you can go to the website and purchase tickets for these performances. And please, if you haven't been to any of these performances, please make it a point to come on one of these nights. June 27, 28, 29 are a matinee on Sunday, June 30.
The ticket's going down Thursday at 10:00 a.m., and they do go...
Well, thank you. That's another piece of information. Tickets on sale Thursday, beginning Thursday at 10:00 a.m., and they do go quickly. So please make it a point to go online and make your reservations.
And on that same note, after every performance that the Cultural Arts Center puts on, and Mr. Cassar and his team of Cassars, and all of the teachers, you sit there and you say, okay, nothing can be better than this. And they just keep topping, you know, the last performance. And I heard this is just the best so far, and it's something, if you, Ms. Fochet said, if you have not been yet, it's really done very well in our students and our teachers and administrators who take part in the production of it, and musicians and tech crew do a phenomenal job. So it's always very, very well-done. Okay, anyone else? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? There's motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Harris. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, and good night.